The City of Boston zoning board of appeal hearing for February 15th is now in session. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with the applicable provisions of the open meeting law, including the updated provisions enacted by the legislature last year. The new law allows the board to continue its practice of holding virtual hearings until April 1st, 2022. This hearing of the board is being held remotely via the Zoom webinar event platform. This hearing is also being livestreamed. In order to ensure this hearing of the board is open to the public, members of the public may access this hearing through telephone and video conferencing. The information for connecting to this hearing is listed on today's hearing agenda, which is posted on the public notices page of the city's website, boston.gov. Members of the public will enter the virtual hearing as attendees, which means you will not see yourself on the screen and you will be muted throughout, unless administratively unmuted when asked to comment. Board members, applicants, and their attorneys or representatives will participate in the meetings as panelists, and they will appear alongside the presentation material when speaking. Panelists are strongly encouraged to keep video on while presenting to the board. As with our in-person meetings, comments and support will be followed by comments and opposition. The order of comments is as follows: elected officials, representatives of elected officials, and members of the public. The chair may limit the number of people called upon to offer comment and the time for commenting as time constraints require. For that reason, the board prefers to hear from members of the public who are most impacted by the project, though that is those individuals who are closest to the project. If you wish to comment on an appeal, please click the raise hand button along the bottom of your screen in the Zoom webinar platform. Click it again, and your hand should go down. When the host sees your hand, you will receive a request to unmute yourself. Select yes, and you should be able to drop. If you are connected to the hearing by telephone, please press star nine and lower your hand. You must press star six to unmute yourself after you receive the request from the host. Again, if you are connected to the hearing by telephone, press star nine to raise and lower your hand, and press star six to unmute yourself. Those called upon to comment will be asked to state their name and address first and then provide their comment.
Welcome to Zoom. Enter your meeting ID, followed by pound.
In the interest of time and to ensure that you have enough time to do so, please raise your hand as soon as Mr. Fortune reads the address into the record.
Enter your participant ID, followed by pound. Otherwise...
Do not raise your hand before the relevant address is called, or the meeting hosts will not know to call on you at the appropriate time. Please lower your hands after you've made a comment so we know that we've taken care of everybody. Today is the first Zoom meeting, so we expect there will be some hiccups. So please bear with us, but I'm sure for the most part we will sail through the meeting. I will take a quick roll call. Mr. Fortune?
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning, Mr. Ehrlich.
Here.
Ms. Dong?
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning, Mr. Rogiro? Mr. Ligris?
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning, Ms. Bedder Baraza.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning. Any word from Mr. Rogiro?
He's on, Madam Chair.
Good morning. I was putting my headphones on.
Okay. Mr. Hampton from the BPDA?
Morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning. Okay, Mr. Fortune, it's yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first order of business is the approval of the hearing minutes of January 25th of 2022. Need a motion?
Motion to approve meeting minutes, Ligris.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Hey, Madam Chair, I'm gonna call the first extension. If the applicant just keep in mind, I'm gonna name the case, and then answer the name and address, and then go into the process. So calling the first case for extension, case BOA 962-28240 Berkeley Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Nick Sizula, Irma Quilte Miller, 28 State Street, Suite 802 in Boston, here on behalf of the applicant.
God's to 40 Berkeley Street. The board originally granted this relief on March 13th of 2020. So this is the applicant's first request for an extension. Tolling does not apply to this relief because it was not granted prior to the declaration of COVID-19 state of emergency by the governor. The applicant now seeks a one-year extension until March 13th of 2023. I recommend that the board grant the extension if it determines that the appropriate, it is appropriate under the circumstances.
May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, motion to extend relief through March 13th, 2023.
Is there a... All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And this is a statement to all people requesting extensions. Please make sure you're doing your due diligence in getting the project moving because we do not give blanket and pocket approval on these cases. The goal is to have it either abandoned or in construction.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Calling the next extension, calling BOA 661-026-236 to 256 Dorchester Street. Name and address for the record, please. Is Mr. Moranci on?
I don't see this.
I'll come back to that one, Madam. Is anybody on here from Dorchester Street, 236 to 256 Dorchester Street?
I hope I...
Morning, Mr. Fortune.
Can you hear me now? Yes. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is George Moranci, an attorney with a business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston. Madam Chair, members, this matter requires...
Thank you, Mr. Moranci.
I'm sorry.
Regarding 236 to 256 Dorchester Street, the board originally granted its relief on March 2nd of 2018, and it granted its first extension of relief until March 2nd, 2021. The board subsequently granted a second one-year extension, but that relief was unnecessary. With tolling, the first extension remains valid until June 7th of 2022. I recommend that the board confirm for the record that the relief remains valid until that date. The applicant also requests an additional extension until March 2nd of 2023. I recommend that the board grant that additional extension if it determines that it's appropriate under the circumstances, taking into account that this would only be the applicant's second necessary extension.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My client is very close to permit issuance on this. He is still working with the BPDA on finalization of...
So, Mr. Moranci, can you hold on for a second? May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, motion to confirm that relief remains valid through June 7th, 2022 with all applicable tolling and confirm an extension of relief through March 2nd, 2023, which of course would include all applicable tolling.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 833-835-6GENERALWILLIAMHDIVINEWAY. Name and address for the record, please.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Name is Attorney Jeremy Sears with this address of 160 Federal Street here in Boston.
Thank you, Mr. Sears. Regarding 6 General William H. Divine Drive, the board originally granted this relief on March 1st of 2019 and granted an extension until March 1st of 2022. However, that extension was unnecessary. With tolling, the original grant of relief remains valid until June 6th of 2022. I recommend that the board confirm for the record that the relief remains valid until that date. The applicant now also requests an additional extension until March 1st of 2023. I recommend that the board grant that additional extension if it determines that it is appropriate under the circumstances, taking into account that it would only be the applicant's first necessary extension.
Can I hold on a second? Was there a board member who needed to recuse themselves on this?
Yes, I do. I do, Madam Chair. Joe.
Okay, Jeff. Okay. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, motion to confirm that relief remains valid through June 6th, 2022 with all applicable tolling and an extension granted through March 1st, 2023, which of course includes all applicable tolling.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 694-026-77 to 85 Liverpool Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Richard Lins actually covering for Attorney Lorraine Satino, 245 Summer Street, East Boston, on behalf of a petitioner.
Thank you, Mr. Lins. Regarding 77 to 85 Liverpool Street, the board originally granted this relief on March 2nd of 2018. The board also granted its first and second extensions of this relief. However, the second extension was unnecessary. With tolling, the first extension remains valid until June 7th of 2022. I recommend that the board confirm for the record that the relief remains valid until that date. The applicant now also requests an additional extension until March 2nd of 2023. I recommend that the board grant that additional extension if it determines that it is appropriate under the circumstances, taking into account that this would only be the applicant's second necessary extension.
Madam Chair, motion to confirm that relief remains valid through June 7th, 2022 with all applicable tolling and further move to extend relief through March 2nd, 2023, which of course would include all applicable tolling.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 889-510-155 Porter Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Richard Lins, 245 Summer Street, East Boston, on behalf of a petitioner.
Thank you, Mr. Lins. Regarding 155 Porter Street, the board originally granted this relief on March 15th of 2019. The board also granted its first extension of relief, however, that extension was unnecessary. With tolling, the original relief remains valid until June 20th of 2022. I recommend that the board confirm for the record that the relief remains valid until that date. The applicant now also requests an additional extension until March 15th of 2023. I recommend that the board grant that additional extension if it determines that it's appropriate under the circumstances, taking into account that this would only be the applicant's first necessary extension.
Madam Chair, motion to confirm that relief remains valid through June 20th, 2022 with all applicable tolling. Further move to extend relief through March 15th, 2023, which of course would include any and all applicable tolling.
Madam Chair, can I ask some questions of the attorney on this?
No, we just because of tolling, let's just move ahead. But I've reminded everybody that we are expecting these projects to move ahead with due diligence, okay, and as rapidly as possible.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BZC 298-46, 1954 Commonwealth Avenue. Name and address for the record, please. Is Mr. Ruffo on? He is on. Get his hand up. Name and address for the record, please.
Sorry, can you hear me now? Thank you. Paul Ruffo, 101 Arch Street, Boston, Mass., is the attorney for the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Ruffo. Regarding 1954 Commonwealth Avenue, this relief has a complicated history. The board originally granted this relief in 2010, and that relief has since been extended both by operation of state law and more recently by extensions granted by this board. Relevant here, the board granted an extension of relief set to expire on March 31st of 2021. With tolling, the grant of relief remains valid until June, July 6th of 2020. I recommend that the board confirm for the record that the relief remains valid until that date. The board also granted an extension of relief until March 31st of 2022, but that extension was unnecessary. The applicant now also requests an additional extension until March 31st of 2023. I recommend that the board grant the additional extension if it determines that it's appropriate under the circumstances.
I'll just make a comment here, Attorney Ruffo. Please make sure that everything is being done to move this project along. I understand that you had some other issues beyond our control or beyond your control, but I'm assuming that they are taken care of and that a decade later, a decade plus later, we can expect construction to occur or the permit to be abandoned. May I have a second, please?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Chair, we never called it to the record. Mr. Ligris didn't do that.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Ligris, can you please make a motion?
I think we might have lost him.
Oh, I thought I had, well...
Madam Chair, I can do that. I can do the motion.
Okay.
With tolling, the relief remains valid until June 6th of 2022, but with an additional extension, a grant to March 31st of 2023.
Okay, may I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Call the last case for extension, calling case BOA 918-229-TW-SNELLINGPLACE. Name and address for the record, please.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Matt Eckel with a business address of 11 Beacon Street, on behalf of the applicant.
Regarding to Twosnelling Place, the board originally granted this relief on July 28th of 2019, but then the butter filed an appeal on the relief of the Superior Court on July 15th of 2019. The parties dismissed that appeal by agreement on March 31st of 2021. The applicant now seeks the determination by the board of when its relief expires because it's subject to both litigation tolling and COVID-19 tolling. I recommend that the board confirm for the record that this relief remains valid until June 17th of 2024. This encompasses both the extension required by litigation tolling here that it is two years minus 18 days running from the date of the appeal was dismissed and that tolling required by Chapter 53 of the Acts of 2020. The Act applies to all relief that was valid prior to the COVID-19 state of emergency and requires an extension equal to the length of the state of emergency.
Okay, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, hereby move to confirm for the record that this relief remains valid until June 17th, 2024, inclusive of all applicable tolling.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Thank you.
Sorry, Madam Chair, hold on two seconds.
Is the Divine Way that we still have hanging? Oh, no, I think we're all set, right? Yeah, we are.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sorry about that. I couldn't find the paperwork for the board final audit. I'm calling case BOA 115-918-99 Ashley Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Derek Small, have a business address of 51 Dobson Road. Madam Chair, we're here today as a BFA seeking clarification on the side yard setback proviso issued by the board. The applicant's own 90 Ashley Street, and they also own and reside in the property to the left of the property. At the hearing, at issue was the side yard setback on the right side with the abutting neighbor and abutting property. The neighbor at that time asked the board to maintain the required setback on the right side of the property. A motion was made to approve...
Sorry, Mr. Smalls, what is the address of the abutter on the right-hand side?
On the right-hand side, it is, I believe it's 90, I think it's 95 Ashley, or 96.
96, okay. So this is the side yard of abutting 96 Ashley Street?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Bedder, have you had a chance to look at the plans and confirm that?
I have, yes.
May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, just for the point of clarification, secretary read into the record 9 Ashley, it's 9th Ashley Street.
Okay, I'm glad you are listening to this.
Thank you for catching that.
So may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
I second. Baraza.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Calling the next case for G-Cod, calling case BOA 126-5130, 12 to 1222 Farnsworth Street. This is a change of argument from office to research and development lab, attendance planned for floors 2 to 6. This is a violation, this is a first-floor restaurant to remain. The violation is Article 32, Section 4. This is a G-Cod groundwater conservation overly disparate application. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Jared Agarvant, business address 112 Water Street, Boston. This is an existing building, dates from about 1918. The system is going to be put in the basement. All the paperwork will submit.
Okay, can you hold on for a minute? Christian, are you on?
Yes, Madam Chair. Good morning, and good morning, members of the board. Christian Seminelli, Boston Groundwater Trust, and we have both the Boston Water and Sewer Approval and No Harm Letters.
Madam Chair, we also have those letters.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
I'm gonna call the 930 cases for any deferrals or withdrawals. If you can give me the address first, please. This is for 930 only, deferrals or withdrawals.
Mr. Fortune, 85 Mount Pleasant Avenue, please.
Thank you, Mr. Class. Calling case BOA 128-5330, 85 Mount Pleasant Avenue. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Mark Lacass, Lacass Law, 75 Arlington Street in Boston, representing the applicant for 85 Mount Pleasant Avenue. We are seeking a deferral as a result of the community process. Further revisions will be made to the proposal, reducing the unit count, and we need to submit those revised plans and get a revised refusal letter from ISD before we may proceed to hearing.
Thank you.
Motion to defer.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The date?
We have a date of April 5th at 11:30.
Thank you so much.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals? Address, please. I'm sorry, did someone say something?
I don't have any.
Oh, here, I got some for you.
All right, Madam Chair, we do have a case that's being withdrawn, so I'm gonna call it up for the record. Calling case BOA 120-8867.
Hold on, hold on. Mr. Ambassador, can you mute everybody, please? Okay, go ahead, Mr. Fortune.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We do have a withdrawal. Case BOA 120-8867, 841 Columbia Road. They are withdrawing, so I'll make a motion for denial without prejudice.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the first case, calling BOA 128-5332, 229 to 231 Bunker Hill Street, sorry. This is permitted occupancy of an existing restaurant to 87 occupants. The violation is Article 6, Section 4. Other protectional conditions, this proviso to this petitioner only. Article 6, Section 4, the hours of operation from 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Article 9, Section 1, the increase of occupancy to a restaurant with takeout use. In Article 9, Section 2, non-conforming use change. Name and address for the record, please.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Anthony McGinnis, on behalf of the applicant, 176 Federal Street, Boston. This proposal is to open a new restaurant at this location, which was previously the Grasshopper Cafe. The restaurant will have a 12:00 a.m. closing hour. The applicants have agreed with the neighborhood that they will have a proviso that it will only be 79 occupants, 65 seats, 14 standing. They are asking for takeout as well to accompany the use of the restaurant. The applicants have done some extensive work with the neighbors, the neighborhood, the butters. They also have gone through a liquor license approval for this location with the same amount of seats and occupancy. They have numerous letters of support from the neighborhood, from elected officials.
Oh, hold on. Thank you. We will get all that information from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. So this is, so we have it increased occupancy to 87. And so it's down, and so we should note this on the record that it's down to 79 occupants. And so the request essentially is, just wanting to check out, what's the name of the restaurant?
The name of the restaurant right now is Bunker Hill Restaurant.
Okay. And so the condition is the, and the hours of operation are staying the same as it was previously?
No, they have asked for an increase of the hours of operation. They were previously 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. They are asking now that the closing hour will be 12:00 a.m. with an opening hour at 7:00 a.m.
7:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m., okay. Okay, let's see, it's the takeout use. Okay, how are the plans, Ms. Bedder?
Madam Chair, the plans are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal? Elected officials or representatives of elected officials, go first.
Hi, yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Caitlin Stapleton with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The previous liaison in our office had multiple community meetings for various proposals at this location. Since this applicant's meeting on January 27th, 2021, they have continued to work very closely with the neighborhood as they navigated through the process. We have received 20, 25 letters of support, including one from Representative D M Y, along with the Harvard School, the Boys and Girls Club, and local businesses, along with direct butters. I have received no letters of opposition. At this time, we would like to defer to the board. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Michael Benetti from the Office of Boston City Council, Lydia Edwards. The council would like to go on record in support of this project with the proviso of 79 occupants.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair. City Council at large, Rui Tuijeng here to speak in support of this project of Bunker Hill Restaurant. The restaurant has been in conversation with the butters and with neighbors and has been a great, another restaurant where they've been a great member of the community. So I'm here to just speak in support of this project.
Thank you, and welcome to the Board of Appeal. It's nice to hear from you.
Thank you. Nice to be here.
Madam Chair, secretary here. We do have those letters that the mayor's office spoke of.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I've heard 76 and I've heard 79. Is, what was the, what was the agreement with the community?
79.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, City Council at large, Michael Flaherty, echoing the sentiments, Council, Council Edward's office. The council would like to go on record in support.
Madam Chair, do you have a raised hand? Tim O'Brien, who's been unmuted.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, yep, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
This is Tess O'Brien. My address is 235 Bunker Hill Street. We are the most direct abutter to this restaurant. And I want to acknowledge that we have had conversations with the proponents, but I would by no means consider them extensive. Um, that said, we do appreciate that they adjusted the occupancy down to accommodate some of our concerns. Um, outstanding primary concern is the closing time. Um, so 7:00 AM to 11, to midnight every day of the week is a lot for a very residential neighborhood. We have very young children. We nearly share walls with this building. And we would greatly appreciate an 11:00 PM closing time on Sunday through Wednesday or Sunday through Thursday would be very considerate for neighbors. Um, many director butters agree.
Okay, um, and, and the specific hours will be worked out, um, through the licensing board. So please make sure you're on that call too, on that meeting too, okay?
Madam Chair, I have no additional raised hands. Thank you.
Okay, given that information, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I would like to put forward a motion of approval with ISD Fire Prevention Review.
And, 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 and this occupancy and the takeout provision and 11:00 PM closing time, Monday to, uh, Sunday.
I'm sorry, I mean, it's approval to, with the usual takeout, right, um?
Yep, the, the reduced occupancy to seven, to 79.
Yep.
And closing time on Sunday through Thursday at 11:00 PM.
11:00 PM and this applicant only?
And this applicant only.
And with, with ISD.
The request is for 12:00 AM, sorry.
Yep, yep, no, I know what you requested. I, I think that the name is concerned is, is.
So can I, can I ask applicants to please not insert themselves when this board is in discussion? Uh, Miss, Miss Better, please go ahead. Did you have, uh, something else to add?
With, uh, ISD Fire Prevention Review.
Okay, so it's the takeout language, fire prevention review, this applicant only. Um, limited to 79 occupants and an 11:00 PM closing, is?
Monday through, on Sunday through Thursday.
Sunday, Sunday through Thursday. Um, so there's, um, let's see, um, um, a motion, a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're set with those provisos.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 128-5189, 501 Boylston Street. This is a change of occupancy to, for restaurant with takeout, for 44 outdoor seating, an accessory retail store, work to include a fit-out space for the new tenant, Foxtrot. The violation is Article 8, Section 7, the restaurant with outdoor seating use is conditional. Article 8, Section 7, restaurant with takeout, 36A use is conditional. Name and address for the record, please.
Madam Chair, I need to recuse myself. Better Barazza.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Ryan Kozda from McDermott McWhittia Miller, 28 State Street, Suite 802, Boston, Massachusetts, on behalf of the applicant. Also with me on the call this morning is Molly Sansa from Foxtrot Ventures, which is the proposed new tenant for this building, 501 Boylston Street. Um, as the board might know, this is the site of the former Pratam Anger Cafe. And the proponent is seeking a change of use and occupancy of the first floor of that space to restaurant with takeout, outdoor seating, and accessory retail use. Um, this was.
Okay, please walk, so walk us through, this is Foxtrot. Um, so it's outdoor seating, how many in, in, indoor seating?
Uh, I believe there is a total of 13 seats in, indoors and 44 outdoors. By way of background, this is, uh, it's a high-end neighborhood market and cafe with seating areas both indoor and outdoor for grab-and-go items. And they'll also be selling a variety of wine and spirits at retail with an emphasis on locally sourced products. This is their first location.
So, hold on, so the, so let's just get this in, in order, okay? So you, this is, um, a, a conditional use for, um, let's see, for outdoor seating and for restaurant with takeout? Um, so we have information on that. Is everything, is everything handicapped accessible?
To my knowledge, I believe that it is. It's existing conditions. I don't know if Molly can chime in on.
Yes, okay.
Yes.
And then, so tell us how large the retail, accessory retail is?
In terms of square footage?
Yes.
Molly, do you happen to know that? I unfortunately do not.
Yes, is that, that's the total square footage of the space?
Yeah, the indoor footprint.
Yeah, it's about 3,000 square feet.
So the 3,000 square feet is the total space, so I'm assuming the retail is just, um, how much, how many square feet? We just want a sense of the percentage of space?
It's a relatively small portion of the space. Uh, Molly can correct me if I'm mistaken, but I believe it'll be about one case within the market.
Okay, yes. Okay, um, so, um, Mr. Olick?
I was, I was, I was actually not aware that Miss Barazza was going to recuse herself, so I haven't seen the plans, but they seem like a relatively de minimis fit out, uh, from what you can see on the screen.
And let me ask about the hours of operation?
The hours will be 6:00 AM to 12:00 AM for the food service with liquor ceasing at 11:00 PM. And I will also just add for the record, the former cafe that was at the site did have this, we're looking to put the exception of the retail.
Okay, hold on, hold on, please, um, 6:00 AM to 12:00 AM, seven days a week?
Uh, yes, that's correct.
Okay, um, any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Molly Griffin from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, our office would like to defer to the board's judgment. We did host a butters meeting on November 9th, 2021, um, where they answered a couple of questions from residents and neighbors. And I know that they also met with the Neighborhood Association of Back Bay and received their non-opposition. Uh, thank you.
Madam Chair, do you have a raised hand? Conrad Armstrong. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
I'm Conrad Armstrong from 439 Marlboro Street, uh, representing Neighborhood Association of Back Bay. I'm just confirming that, yes, the applicant met with us and we have no opposition to this applicant.
Is Elliot around and about, or are you going to be the new representative?
I, I am the new representative for these kinds of issues.
Okay, so give him our best and thank him for all his work, all his years of work.
I have a check, no additional raised hands.
Pardon?
Oh, I have no additional raised hands.
May I have a motion, please?
Uh, I'll make a motion to approve for this applicant only.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
With takeout language.
Oh, oh, yes, let's go through the provisos.
Yep.
So approval, um, with the usual takeout language, um?
And for this applicant only.
And this applicant only, okay. Is there a second on that?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any, any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 124-8961, 45 Cedar Grove Street. This is add a petition wall and two storage closets in the basement. The violation is Article 65, Section 9, excessive FAR, and Article 65, Section 9, the number of allowed habitable stories has been exceeded. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Robert Nichols with a business address of 404 in the Pons at Ave Dorchester. Uh, it's a project where we finished the basement, it was an existing finished basement, but we, we redid it and it triggered on FAR violation as well as, uh, habitable, habitable stories violation. Um, we did get.
So, so can you back up? Tell us how many units in this building?
Yes, uh, just a single family.
It's a single-family owner occupied?
Yes.
Okay, um, and so tell us about what the basement looks like?
So currently, uh, there's one room, finished room down there, uh, full bath and a mudroom. Um, the basement's at grade when you come off the street, so like, right where you park and walk right into the mudroom and then I'll head upstairs to the main living level.
Okay, how are the plans, Miss Better?
Plans are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is any?
This is going from, from one to eight?
Um, this is Cedar Grove, Miss Olick, Mr. Olick.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Um, uh, any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal or in opposition?
Yes, uh, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. George Quinn with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Um, the applicant received from Director Butters and also letter of support from the local Cedar Grove Civic Association, so at this time, we would like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Okay, Madam Chair, I have no raised hands at the moment.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion with a proviso that the store is not to be used as habitable room.
Okay, is there a second?
Second, address.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Calling the next case, calling BOA 128-5857, 362 Weldon Street. This is a rare two-story addition with two full, two full baths, half, expand the second floor, bedroom, kitchen. A finishing basement, family room, laundry, expand closet. The violation is Article 56, Section 8, side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please. Is Miss Stacy on? I believe she was on earlier.
I'm sorry, yes, here I am, good morning. Uh, good morning, Madam Chair. Uh, Catherine Oates Stacy, 19 Rendell Road, West Roxbury, Mass.
Okay, so tell us what's being proposed?
Um, this is a total gut rehab of a single-family home that's been in our family for more than 70 years. It was built in 1922 and has had little to no renovations done on it since then. Uh, we're proposing, as the initial description said, new insulation, we're going to convert from oil, uh, to gas.
What's about, so tell us about the addition?
About the addition? It's a rear addition to expand the kitchen and add, um, a closet and, uh, a half-bath on the first floor. There is currently no closet or bath on the first floor. The second floor is pushing out to accommodate a master bathroom off of the master bedroom. Um, and expand a small bedroom into slightly larger, it will still remain pretty small bedroom.
Okay, so, uh, what is the required rear yard and, uh, what with this addition will it, is it proposed to?
It doesn't encroach on the rear yard, ma'am.
What I'm asking is, you know, the zoning puts, uh, a rear yard, uh, because this is a rear yard, I'm sorry, a side yard, sorry, side yard extension. What does the, um, zoning require and what are you proposing with this addition?
It requires 10 feet and it will be at.
It's existing at 5.7.
It's existing at 5.7, so it would be an extension for just that little triangle that comes off. If you look on the first floor plan, you can see on the left-hand side where the sink is, that little squi, that little rectangle where the sink is, that's the addition.
Okay.
On the first floor. There is no, there is no, um, violation on the second floor. On the second floor, it's bumped in.
Got it. Um, how are the plans, um, Miss Better?
Madam Chair, the plans are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer judgment to the board on some background information on the community process. The applicant went before the West Roxbury Neighborhood Council on December 14th and received their unanimous support. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, City Council at large, Michael Flaherty, council would like to go on record in support.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands at the moment.
May I have a motion, please?
Madam, Madam Chair, I'd like to put, put, put forward a motion of approval.
Do we want design review because that?
I didn't think it was necessary. It's very simple, traditional. I didn't have a problem with it.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set with that? Good luck.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 126-0270, 349 Market Street. This is paving grass area for parking for two spaces. The violation is Article 51, Section 56, off-street parking and loading. Name and address for the record, please.
Hello, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is Mike Ross with, uh, attorney Mike Ross with a business address of One International Place, on behalf of the applicant. Um, as the secretary said, this is just, um, to legalize a driveway to allow access to rear parking spaces in the back of 349 Market Street. Uh, the driveway would use a portion of the abutting property at 353, uh, Market Street. Uh, because we've been working, uh, through the community process, we've also agreed to install drainage uh, underneath the, uh, driveway in, in, in the parking area so that it will, uh, pull water away from the area. Uh, that's much.
So, Mr. Ross, uh, Councilor Ross, is this going to, is there a deed, um, something reg, going to be registered at the registry about this shared driveway, or is it already, has it already been memorialized?
Yeah, no, it's, uh, if we get approval from the board, we will, um, we will record an easement between 353 and 349 Market Street with the registry.
And tell us how many units are at 349?
It's a single-unit building.
It's a single-family and, um?
In the 2F district.
Single-family, it's 2F, 5,000?
5,000, yeah.
Okay, and then, uh, so this is for two spaces?
That's right, in the rear of the building.
Okay, uh, Mr. D'Amico, are you on?
Yes, I am.
Please, name and address on the record and tell us, uh, your opinion on this?
Bob D'Amico, Boston Transportation Department, and due to the lack of maneuverability in the use of another property, um, I'd like to, uh, oppose this, um, no, this, uh, plan.
Okay, but if they have, um, if they have a, a deed that, that states that this was the abutter, what do you think?
I still think there's not enough maneuverability.
Okay, how are the plans, Miss Better?
Madam Chair, the plans are adequate.
Okay, any additional, any questions from the board? No questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer judgment to the board. Uh, during this community process, we've heard a variety of opinions, uh, from the butters, uh, with some of butters being in opposition uh, due to not enjoying, uh, green space being paved over and concerns about the number of cars in the rear. Uh, there was a director, a butter who was impacted by some wastewater runoff. Uh, the applicant, the representation's been working closely with that abutter to address those concerns. I believe they've gotten to a, a good place in agreement. Um, they went before the Brighton Alston Improvement Association and had, uh, other butters that were on in support. Uh, the BIA, uh, voted to support on the conditions with those wastewater, uh, issues be resolved. Thank you.
Is it wastewater or is it runoff?
Runoff, I, I, my apologies, Madam Chair.
Okay, no worries. And is this the part of Market Street, um, that has, um, that has parking issues? In other words, I'm trying to figure out if it, if, what's, what's the need here?
I would stay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, that's for the counselor. Um, you know, there's, there's parking issues throughout Brighton, uh, so.
Okay, um, Mr. Ambassador, anybody else?
Yes, yep, I know, um, Annabella's on. Annabella, you can unmute yourself if you'd like to speak. Yep. Madam Chair, members of the board, Annabelle Gomes from Brighton Alston Improvement Association. Uh, we work closely with the two, uh, abutters that are impacted from the, the rainwater and they, um, would like to support it with a proviso that the drainage is addressed, um, properly um, as per their plans that they had submitted and, um, that that's just proviso, that that has to be addressed. Okay, and then Nick, um, I have to request for you to unmute yourself. Can you state your name and address for the record, please? You're looking to get testimony here. Hi, Nick, Josie?
Hi.
Go ahead.
I am, uh, calling, um, in support of the family, of the Chan family.
Can you state your name and address, please?
Nicholas Josie. Nicholas Josie, um, thirty-eight Cedar Street.
Okay, go ahead.
Thirty-eight Cedar, sorry, thirty-eight Cedar Street, where?
Roxbury.
Okay, thank you.
And I, um, wanted offer support for this project, for the Chan family. Um, I was at, I was present with the, uh, the last community meeting and I understood the drainage issues. And they have been, they, the family's been working, uh, closely with, um, the community and the, and the abutting neighbors to, to remedy this situation. And, um, see no reason, other reason why it shouldn't go through.
Thank you.
Yeah. I have no additional ways to say it, but...
Nobody from the District City Counselor's office on yet?
Let's see.
Okay. Uh, given that information, may I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to, I'll make a motion to approve.
Subject to easement.
Hold on.
Subject to easement. With the proviso.
Can we have a good, can we have a good design review, uh, to ensure that there is first porous surface and second, that there is, um, an easement?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second for this?
Second, Ligris, again, subject to design review with drainage and a duly recorded easement with the Suffolk County Register deeds.
Is there a second? Oh, so you have the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, Barazza.
Okay, thank you. Uh, motion carries. Um, it is now ten twenty.
Thank you.
Have a ten-minute break and we will reconvene at ten thirty. Um, for members who've just joined, for the public that's just joined, uh, we are on the Zoom platform. Um, so let me just repeat the instructions, um, for using this platform because some of you may have been accustomed to WebEx. Um, so you may, members of the public will enter the virtual hearing as attendees, which means you will not see yourself on the screen and you will be muted throughout unless administratively unmuted when asked to comment. Board members, applicants, and their attorneys or representatives will participate in the hearing as panelists and they will appear alongside the presentation when speaking. Panelists are strongly recommended to keep your video on while presenting to the board. As with our in-person meeting, comments in support will be followed by comments in opposition. If you wish to comment on an appeal, please click the raise hand button along the bottom of your screen in the Zoom webinar platform. Click it again and your hand should go down. When the ambassador sees your hand, you will receive a request to unmute yourself. Select yes and you should be able to talk. Again, if you are connected to the hearing by telephone, please press star nine to raise and lower your hand. You must press star six to unmute yourself. Those called upon to comment will be asked to state their name and address first before they provide their comment. But now again, take a quick roll poll. Mr. Fortune? Mr. Olick?
All right, Madam Chair, I'm here.
Got it. Uh, Mr. Olick? Ms. Dong?
Present.
Mr, Mr. Rugiro?
Here.
Mr., um, Ligris?
Still here.
Good. Ms. Beda Barazza?
Madam Chair, here.
Excellent. Uh, Mr. Olick?
Yes, I ju, just rejoined.
Okay, excellent. Um, Mr. Hampton?
I'm here, Madam Chair.
Good morning, and Mr. D'Amico?
Present.
Excellent, don't sound so excited. Okay? Um, Mr. Fortune, it's yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to call the ten thirty hearings for any deferrals and withdrawals to ten thirty only. If you could give me the address for us, please. Okay, doesn't sound like we have any, which is good. Calling case BOA 125-4445-56-BYRONT STREET. This is to create three parking spaces in the rear of the home using an easement from fifty-eight Byron Street. Violation of Article fifty-three, section fifty-six point five, off-street parking maneuverability. Article fifty-three, section nine, the side yard is insufficient. And Article fifty-three, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Steven, you've been unmuted? Oh, I, someone just said...
Hi, Steven O'Brien, uh, fifty-six Byron Street.
Okay, so please tell us, is this a one, two, or three-family dwelling?
Uh, this is a two-family at fifty-six Byron.
Okay. And is any of it owner occupied?
Uh, both units are owner occupied.
Okay. So tell us what's being proposed.
Um, sorry, I believe my, my attorney's on this as well.
Okay, who's, who's your attorney?
Is it Vincent? Okay, Vincent, uh... Okay. Okay, Vincent, go ahead. I, I made you a panelist, you'll be able to unmute yourself.
But, hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes, please put your name and address on the record and tell us what's being proposed.
Sure. My name is Vincent DiPaolo, I'm from Smith, Doug &amp; Buell in Ruffo. I'm representing Steve O'Brien and Steve Winiger for the fifty-six Byron Street project. Uh, so I, I can answer your question. Uh, so it is owner occupied. Uh, what they're looking to do is they're looking to pave their backyard. They acquired an easement from their next-door neighbor to access their backyard through their neighbor's property. The, the driveway's located at fifty-eight Byron Street. Their home's located at fifty-six Byron Street. They will access the, uh, property through the fifty-eight Byron Street driveway. There's already been curb cuts, so there's no curb cuts required whatsoever. All they're looking to do is to pave their backyard portion of the park as required, as you can see on the diagram where the red parking spots are. Uh, so, at the end...
Um, let me ask you, is, has that easement been mem, been memorialized at the registry?
Yes, it has.
It has, okay. Tell us about the width of that driveway.
So the, the width of the driveway itself, which has already been existing, which already uses the driveway, four fifty-eight Byron, that's nine point nine feet. The parking area in the back is going to be, I believe, it's going to be twenty-three feet. And I'm actually looking at it right now.
And let me ask you, are the vehicles anticipated to be parked side by side or tandem?
They're going to be parked side by side. We've actually tried this out. I have some photographs if the board would like to see them. So we've actually tried this out already. Uh, and it's actually, just to clarify as well, it's for only two parking spots, not for three.
Bottom.
And so they've tried this out, they've put two cars back there. There's plenty of room to turn around, there's plenty of room to park, and there's plenty of room to ingress and egress.
Okay.
And we had, uh, abutters meetings and no...
Hold on, hold on, hold on, please. Um, how are the plans, Ms. Better?
Madam Chair, the plans are adequate.
Uh, Mr. D'Amico, any comments on this?
Uh, yes, um, I, Bob D'Amico, Boston Transportation Department. I'm a little concerned about the turn, uh, from the parking location into the driveway because it's, uh, kind of narrow. But the only thing, uh, I'd like to add is, um, the easement, uh, say fifty-eight is sold, does that easement continue? Or does the new owner have the right to, you know, eliminate that? If that's the case, then we have a serious problem here.
Well, it's, it's, it's been more, sorry. Um, um, may I ask the applicant, while this board is discussing this, uh, to please wait? Go get your book, okay? And can I ask everybody else to mute? Um, so, uh, can I ask, can I ask you, Mr. D'Amico? Um, assuming everything else is fine as far as the, um, the, um, the access going into perpetuity, your concern is the, um, is the maneuverability, is that what it is? Did we lose Mr. D'Amico?
That is correct, Madam Chair.
Okay, okay. Uh, any questions from the board?
Yeah, um, Counselor, this is a condominium, correct? Fifty-six Byron is not a two-family, it's a, well, it's a two-family that was converted into condominium, is that correct?
Correct, but both condos are owner occupied.
And each of the spaces will be, uh, on a pertinent easement to each respective unit?
Correct.
Uh, Madam Chair, for Mr. D'Amico?
Um, yeah, I, I have a question. Uh, the applicant said that there's already a curb cut. I'm looking at Google Maps and I don't see one.
There, there is. The, the people in, uh, fifty-eight Byron are living there right now. Next door has fo, four parking spots in the backyard already. Next door has four parking spots in the backyard already. So Google Maps might not be updated. It's actually, 58 Byron was approved by the board, I think, two years ago to...
Okay, then this must be an old picture. And in terms of maneuverability, Mr. D'Amico, is, given that there's only two spaces, is that less of a problem than the original three proposed?
Actually, no, ma, because of the fact that even if there's only two spaces, it's a difficult turn to make, in the right turn, to leave the parcel. And to come back in, it's, it might be easier, but to leave, it's very difficult.
The only way that would be possible would be to asphalt the whole backyard. For easy maneuverability.
So let me see if I get this right. The plan that we are looking at basically talks about the access. I'm assuming that the parking, okay, so the parking is proposed in the rear there. Yeah, I get, okay.
I guess, I just got a question for clarity. Is there parking behind 58 already?
Yes.
Where are those spots?
So those spots, if you're looking at the picture, so see the portion of the diagrams as part of lot 103 assessors ID? And all that white space, those are all parking spots already.
And those are pull-in parking spots for right next to each other? How many are there?
There's four.
Can we just hold on for a minute? Is, is the conversation that we're hearing coming from the ISD office? Can I, can I just have everybody muted, please, Ms. Ambassador, so we can hear the applicant's representative? Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out relationship between where all these six cars would be at once. And if one of those...
Sorry, you, you...
There's a tough back out. If there's a spot that's right on the property line, that's going up north and south, the car is going east and west, and I have a hard time backing out with the car right there. So it would have been helpful, I guess, to show the whole picture of the parking back there.
I have, I have pictures that if I can share my screen, I can show the board.
Before you do that, Counselor, this easement was recorded in November of 2020. Are the parking spaces currently being used by 56 Byron?
No.
What, what's been the delay in coming before the board?
It's been the community process. We had, we were working, the 58 Byron Street owner was originally going to handle getting the permitting, but then he asked us to handle it on behalf of 56 Byron Street. So that was the initial delay. And then obviously COVID and things like that. So we had a community meeting for the abutters in November. We had the Harborview meeting in December, and then we had the second Harborview meeting in January.
Okay. Any more questions from the board?
Madam Chair, Mr. D'Amico has his hand raised. I'd like to hear from him again.
Thank you, Madam Chair, lady, and members of the board. I am kind of concerned that the other parking spaces, like Mr. Rugiro said, are not reflected for number 58, which would really hamper the access and egress even more, even though they're not shown on 58. So I support my request for a denial on this project.
Okay. Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Natalia Venitez with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Our office would like to defer to the board's judgment at this time. However, the applicant had had...
I'm sorry, we cannot hear you, Natalia, you...
I am so sorry. I was so muted.
Don't worry, I mean, it does at some times, so go ahead.
Madam Chair and members of the board, Natalia Venitez with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Our office would like to defer to the board's judgment at this time. The applicant had the abutters meeting in November of 2021, where the owner addressed concerns that were brought up like noise in the backyard for idling, vehicles using abutters easements, and a lot of the support from the abutters in terms of letters. And we had the Harborview Neighborhood Association vote in January 2022 with 24 members in support and zero no position. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is Yumina from the Office of Boston City Council, Lydia Edwards. The city council would like to go on record in support of this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Madam Chair, this is Tom. I just wanted to confirm for the board that it did approve 58 Byron Street back in 2018 for four parking spaces in the rear, in addition to the construction of the condos there, so.
Thank you. Mr. Hampton?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Jeff Hampton, Senior Zoning Planner at the BPDA. We recommend a denial without prejudice just because of the maneuverability. We understand that there is an easement on the property. However, it is just a nine-foot-wide driveway. We just don't think that it's inappropriate that you're traveling over somebody else's property, especially the rear yard, to access your own off-street parking. So we recommend denial without prejudice.
If I, if I could show the pictures, I really think it highlights...
Okay, so hold on. So given all that information, may I have a motion, please?
I'd like to, I'd like to make a, I was going to make a motion for deferral and see if the applicant can try to explain this a little bit better before we, before we deny it. So I'd like to make a motion for deferral.
Is there a second? Is there a second? I did not hear a second. Motion does not carry. May I have another motion?
Motion to deny without prejudice.
Is there a second?
I'll second deny without prejudice.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I oppose.
Motion carries. Motion here. Mr. DiPaolo, I think the difficulty we have is just for future reference, to be able to give us a clear understanding through visuals of what is being proposed and not be selective about it. We need to understand it in its totality, okay?
Well, I tried to show the photographs, but...
No, no, no. Zoom does not allow us to do that, and this, this does not allow us to do that. So everything needs to be submitted way ahead of time, okay? May I have the next case, please?
Calling the next case, calling BOA 128-6504, 24 Parker Street. This is a constructed two-story, one-family addition into the rear, the current one-family structure, and change it to a two-family structure. There'll be a deck on top of the new addition. Violation Article 62, Section 29, off-street parking design maneuverability. Name and address for the record, please.
Is the applicant...
Yes, Zachary Endicott, I sent a request to unmute you. Go ahead. I can hear us, and you're still muted. Hi, Zachary.
Mr.... Do you guys hear me now?
Yes, please go ahead.
About that. Yeah, so basically, we...
Put your name and address on the record first.
Sure, Zachary Endicott. I live at 67 Pearl Street in Charlestown. I'm the manager on this project. And basically what we're doing is we're taking an existing single-family structure, we're converting it into a two-family structure where we are zoned for three-family here. What we did was there was a garage at the end of the driveway that we removed. So we are asking for forgiveness because we are extending a nonconformity, which is an existing driveway that is about nine feet wide instead of the required 10 feet. And basically, we are adding an addition in the back of the building, and the addition will be a two-story addition with a deck on top of it, which will be off of the existing third floor, which is in the front of the house.
Hey, so tell us, let's walk through this project floor by floor.
Sure.
Any, any occupancy in the basement?
In the basement, there will be a bedroom in the back. As currently, it shows bedroom number three, which we actually have converted to an office because the building is, basically, there's a slope. So the front of the building is not above grade, but the back of the building is above grades, which is why we're just going to have one bedroom in the back that will have patio doors that walk out to, to the rear yard and the parking spaces.
And how large is that first-floor unit?
Excuse me?
How large is that unit?
That unit is going to be about 2,000 square feet.
Okay, so this is basement and first floor, is it?
Correct.
Okay. And how many bedrooms in that unit?
There will be two bedrooms in that unit.
Okay. And tell us about the second unit?
The second unit will be on the, the second and third floor. And you'll walk up the stairs, you come into a living room, dining room, open area. In the back will be a master bedroom. Then there will be a staircase that goes up to the third floor, which will have three additional bedrooms. And there will be a door that leads out to a deck, which will be sitting on top of the rear second-floor addition.
So the deck is on the roof?
The deck is not technically on the roof. It's, it's off of the existing third floor.
Yes, but it's on the, okay, so it's, okay, got it.
Yes.
How the, and let's just see what the violations are. Oops, and this is Parker Street, right? Tell us about the, the parking.
Are you asking me about the parking or the plan?
Yeah.
Okay, so basically, we removed the garage that was there so that we could allow for two parking spaces in the rear of the property. And so that each unit will have a dedicated space to, to their, to their unit.
Okay, hold on. Ms., is this Ms. Edwards is running the, the screen? Can you go down one more page? Yes, perfect. Okay. So this is the proposed parking, and it's, how many spaces?
Two spaces.
Two spaces of parking, okay. How were the plans, Ms. Better?
Madam Chair, the plans are adequate.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
I'd just like confirmation on the ceiling height in the basement.
It's going to be eight feet.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. D'Amico, any comments on this one?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Bob D'Amico, BPDA. The maneuverability is extremely difficult. Number one, I don't think that it can be used. And secondly, part of the driveway, quite a bit of it, is only eight and a half feet wide. So that's going to really make it tight. It can be done, but my primary concern is the maneuverability for space, one and two.
So then, in essence, then, two spaces will not work.
That is correct.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, just, I guess for Mr. D'Amico. If the spaces were facing toward turn 90 degrees, would that be possible to get two spaces in? Because that seems like you could get them by there.
No, Mr. Earl, it just won't, it won't fit.
Okay.
Okay. So this is a question for the applicant. Is there parking on this side of the street, on Parker Street?
Yes, there is, Madam Chair.
There is on-street parking on this side?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Okay.
You can have, you can have two parking spaces, but it would be almost parking at the front on the side yard because it is, there is a 10-foot clearance.
So...
Because, if I may, the driveway that's existing is 8.6, but it does open up and become 10 feet where, where the addition is. So it is a little bit wider once you get further in there. So you could theoretically park two, two cars there tandem where it's 10 feet wide as well.
Hold on. Ms. Better, are you suggesting that there could be one, one space in the backyard and one in the, in the driveway where it opens up?
Correct. You can have side yard parking.
Okay.
But you could also do two tandem, right? On the other side?
I'm a big advocate for open green space. So the scenario would be very similar to their abutters condition. I think it was also recommended by BPDA.
Right.
Yeah, Madam Chair, if I may, I was just going to add to that, Ms. Barazza, that that was our recommendation, that they move the parking spaces to the side yard to have actually more open space in the back.
Yeah, that, actually, that's, I mean, that's what I meant. That would be tandem parking.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Caitlin Stapleton with Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Our office held an abutters meeting on January 11th, where any questions asked by abutters were addressed by the applicant. The proposal received nine signatures of support and no letters of opposition. So at this time, we would like to defer to the board. Thank you. I'm shy, I have no wings, hands at the moment.
Okay. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forth a motion of approval with BPDA Design Review and a proviso to only allow for two tandem parking spaces on the side yard.
And to increase open space?
To allow for more open space, correct.
Is there a second? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the next case. Calling the next case, calling BOA 126-8284, 81 to 81A Prince Street. This is a engineered deck assembly over an existing roof. The violation is Article 54, Section 18, roof structure and building height restriction. Article 54, Section 10, the building height is excessive in feet. Name and address for the record, please.
Eric Zacherson, I'm the Architect of the Project by the One Month Chief Charles House. With me is the applicant, Lieutenant, Representative Owner.
Can I please, hold, hold on, Mr. Zacherson, we're having a hard time hearing you. Can I ask everybody, please mute yourself so we can hear the applicant give his testimony? Go ahead.
Thank you. The proposal is to add a, what is effectively three roof decks on top of this project, the existing building at 81 Prince Street in the north end. The headhouse, which is quite large, is existing, and that would be the primary access for these roof decks. The owners have desired that it be constructed, as shown here on the drawing on the right, as three separate areas of a roof deck with a common access on top, and then second means a egress on the side.
And will they be visible from the street?
Prince Street is pretty narrow. From our estimate, no, they will not be visible from that, but they will be visible from other roof decks on the, around the project.
And you're confirming that that headhouse is there?
Yeah, it is existing.
And will not be expanded?
Will not be expanded. It's, it's quite large already, actually.
Okay. How are the plans, Ms. Better?
Madam Chair, the plans are adequate.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Madam Chair and members of the board, this is John Romano from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This proposal had gone through our community process, both through an abutters meeting as well as going through both civic organizations, NURA and NUNIC. NURA had submitted a letter of non-opposition, and NUNIC had supported a letter, had submitted a letter of support. At this time, we'd like to defer to the board for your judgment. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I did have a question for the applicant. Is he...
Hold on, hold on, Mr. Ehrlich, let's just get testimony on the record. Any other testimony from the mayor?
Madam Chair, Secretary, we do have those letters at the Mayor's Office vocal.
Okay, anybody from the city council, District City Council's office?
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is Yumina from the Office of Boston City, sorry, Office of Boston City Council, Lydia Edwards. The city council would like to go on record in support of this project. Thank you.
You? Madam Chair, I do have a raised hand. Angela, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Angela Nogera, and I am the owner of 7 Margaret Street. I am a direct abutter to 81 Prince Street.
Are you in support or in opposition?
I, I am opposed to this project.
For what reason?
The address at 81 Prince Street already has one roof deck coming off of the first floor that directly impacts my property and directly impacts my right to privacy and quiet enjoyment. Now, from what I hear, they want three... Now, from what I hear, they want three other roof decks on top of this same building, which will directly impact my building and my tenants' right to privacy and quiet enjoyment.
Thank you.
You?
Any other? Okay, Mr. Alec, go ahead with your question.
Yeah, I'm just for the applicant, you said the headhouse was already quite large. Um, besides access, what is the space inside the headhouse used for?
Uh, there's, it, it, you, it's just a corridor. Basically, you come up to the top of the stairs, and then you walk along the corridor back for the... So it, it, it's, it's large for, for what we're used to seeing, but there's just a corridor up there from one end to the other.
So there's no, no livable space, no...
There's no livable space, no.
Um, may I ask the applicant, how many units in this building?
Uh, there are currently four, and there's a fifth one under construction in the, on the first floor, which was a separate variance from a separate owner.
Okay, um, okay...
Madam Chair, this is Jeff. Yeah, I'm looking at a decision from March of twenty-twenty-one, where they changed the occupancy from four apartments in a store to five apartments and a roof deck.
And one roof deck?
Yep.
And one roof deck, and this was in March twenty-one?
It was, uh, correct, March, mm, date of the hearing was March twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one.
Okay, March twenty-to, twenty-twenty-one, and so they've already got relief for a roof deck, Mr. Zacherson? Tell us where that roof deck is that you've gotten relief for?
So the, the, the building used to have a, um, uh, restaurant on the first floor. So the first floor is a little longer than the floors of the...
Okay, so I, I understand the, I understand the apartment piece, I'm asking about the roof deck piece.
Right, so the roof deck is on the roof of the first floor at the back of the building? If you, um, I think it was the fourth...
Oh, I see, I, that's what you meant by a roof deck. Uh, is that, is that true, Mister, um, um, Mister Hampton?
Uh, it doesn't say whether or not it's on the first floor, it just says roof deck.
Okay.
Yeah.
So the, so the roof deck has been constructed on the first floor, and your abutters is saying that it's too noisy. Um, so that, um, doesn't give me much, um, um, uh, much backup for thinking through about these three roof decks, um, these three roof decks on the top of the building.
Uh, hey, all due respect, I had not heard this, this comment previously, that condo owner on the first floor, we could have a discussion with them, we've not, I, I had not heard this comment, uh, brought up previously, but I was not in, in, in all of the meetings. So these would be for the u, unit owners of the three units above that one. Um, and that unit owner would not have a, uh, access to the, the roof, roof deck, which is on the top of the building that we're talking about.
Okay, so given all this information, may I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion for approval with BPDA Design Review on the setbacks of the roof, and also ISD review for EGRX condition to be compliant with building code.
And do, and is there anything that is, uh, out that can provide some baffling or something that will, uh, will, you know, support the abutters? Miss, Miss Barazza?
Screening, so you can provide some screening as well.
Okay, is there a second?
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set, good luck.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA one-two-six, three-five-six-three, forty-four Ellery Street. This is a wrecked, a new six-story, eighteen-unit building with garage and side rear roof decks and an elevator. The violation is Article thirteen, Section thirteen dash one, insufficient additional lot area per unit. Article thirteen, Section thirteen dash one, excessive FAR. Article thirteen, Section thirteen dash one, insufficient open space per unit. Article thirteen, Section thirteen dash one, insufficient front yacht setback. Article thirteen, Section thirteen point, thirteen, thirteen dash one, insufficient side yacht setback. Article thirteen, Section thirteen dash one, insufficient rear yacht setback. Article thirteen, Section thirteen dash one, maximum allowed height has been exceeded. And Article thirteen, Section thirteen dash one, the maximum stories has been exceeded. Article twenty-three, Section one, insufficient parking, and Article twenty-four, Section twenty-four dash one, off-street loading days, non-proposed insufficient space. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is George Morancey, I'm an attorney with the business address of three-fifty West Broadway in South Boston. I represent the owners and developers of the site, Malcolm Barber and Nile Dowdell. Tim Johnson, the project architect, is also here. This is an Article eighty small project approved by the BPDA last month. The proposed project consists of a new six-story building containing eighteen residential condominium units with six accessory off-street parking spaces located at forty-four Ellery Street in South Boston's Andrew Square neighborhood. The lot size is approximately seven thousand seven hundred forty-nine square feet and is currently occupied by a vacant two-story building. The eighteen proposed units consist of fourteen two-bedroom units and four one-bedroom units. The unit sizes range from six hundred fifty-two square feet for the one-bedroom units, with the two-bedroom units ranging from a thousand thirty-four to fourteen hundred eighty square feet. The site is located approximately one hundred yards from the MBTA's Andrew Station on the red line and an approximately twelve-minute walk from the MBTA's New Market Commuter Railstop, and is therefore a true TOD project. It is also an eight-minute walk to the shops, entertainment, and restaurants of South Bay Center.
So, Miss... Sorry, Miss, oh, go ahead, Mr. Morancey, that's exactly where I was gonna go, what's the zoning, please?
The applicable zoning district is a B-one general business district with certain dimensional requirements defaulted to a nearby H-one residential district per the provisions of Article thirteen, Section four. The site's B-one zoning district itself is bounded on the westerly side of Ellery Street by an M-one restricted manufacturing district. Notably, the site's also within the area of the Dorchester Avenue Planning Initiative, which provides a BPDA-approved framework for new zoning for this area. With respect to the requested zoning relief, all of the applicable requirements are under the base code, which will eventually be replaced by new zoning based on the BPDA plan. Accordingly, the side setbacks, uh, the site setbacks, the building's FAR in height, and the provided off-street parking and loading were all set by the BPDA during the over-two-year planning and urban design approval process. With that, Madam Chair, I'll pause and take any questions.
Go ahead, tell us about those roof decks.
Uh, the roof decks are, uh, two small private roof decks, uh, one is a hundred eighty square feet. Uh, it is for the use of top-floor unit six-oh-one only. Uh, the other is one hundred, uh, one is a hundred seventy square feet, unit six-oh-one, the other's a hundred eighty-six square feet, for the exclusive use of unit six-oh-two.
Okay, and tell us how parking is supposed to be, uh, provided?
Parking is provided, there's an existing curb cut on Ellery Street, uh, it's provided on the ground floor of the building, uh, along with, uh, uh, you know, other building amenities, including bike parking, uh, that was, uh, you know, is required as part of the Article eighty small project process. So the ground floor here consists of, uh, six parking spaces, recycled bin and dumpsters, uh, a small kitchenette for the ample of common patio in the rear of the building, within the twenty-two-foot rear setback, uh, and, um, also a, an elevator core, uh, as well as the, uh, the main stairway for the building in a residential foyer.
So access is to the parking is through a garage or driveway?
Uh, through a garage, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Into a garage, I should say.
Okay, into a garage, okay, got it, um, and there are rear decks, are there?
There are, uh, inset side balconies, and there are also, uh, rear, rear balconies to provide, uh, some additional usable open space for the units.
And there is no possibility of having, um, loading within the building?
Well, the, the fact is that, uh, you know, with only six parking spaces there and eighteen units in the building, there is space within the garage for moving van, for example, to enter, discharge its contents, uh, um, in the elevator area. That would involve, uh, obstructing, you know, cars entering or leaving the garage for a certain amount of time. But again, with, uh, with only six cars there and with scheduled move-ins occurring fairly infrequently with an eighteen-unit condominium building, uh, there would hopefully not be much of a conflict there using the garage to facilitate move-ins.
Okay, I think that's, because that's always better, especially in Andrew Square, which is so busy, um, versus having it on the, um, on the, on the street. How are the plans, Miss Better?
Madam Chair, the plans are adequate, I just have a, a question, how come there's no building plans or a site plan?
Uh, there should be site plan, a site plan with the submissions, uh, Tim Johnson is on, but, uh, Tim, uh, obviously for the plans that you submitted to ISD for, um, for the refusal letter, they, they require to include a site plan. What, what sheet number?
There's a complete set submitted, yes, George.
Okay, because what you're showing on the screen is what I have, and there are no building plans, so I'm just going by your description.
Hmm, uh, uh, again, uh, this is the, the full set of plans that, that was submitted. Uh, I can see the ISD, um, Plans Examiner stamp on it, Mr. Demato. So I, I can explain what, what happened to that, um, what happened to the, the full set of plans, but they were certainly there.
Okay, um, any questions from the board? How many IDP units, Mr. Morancey?
Uh, this is, um... Uh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
There are three, there are three members.
Yes. The, the normal requirement, Madam Chair, would be two, uh, but since, since this is in, within Plan South Boston Dorchester Avenue, there's actually a seventeen percent mobility component to this, so instead of the two required, normally required IDP, there is three.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Hi, Madam Chair, members of the board, Haley Dillon, Mayor's Office Neighborhood Services, and we'd like to defer to the board for this decision, thank you.
Was there a community process hailing that you know of, beside, uh, did you participate in any of the Article eighty processes?
Um, I did not, I was not able to attend, no.
Okay.
Marner, go ahead.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Anna Calderon from Councilor Flynn's office. Please note, Councilor Flynn has also submitted a letter outlining his support, which is based on a trough community process, feedback from neighbors and the Andrew Square Civic Association, also voting to support the proposal. In addition, the project is in close proximity to the MBTA's station. It will add three affordable units to the city inclusionary development policy program and create those sets of construction gaps, thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the mor, of the board, my name is representing the Carpenters Union, we'd like to go on record in support of this project.
And Madam Chair, I have more additional raised hands.
Okay, uh, may I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, Alec, uh, sorry, couldn't get it on mute, go ahead, Joseph.
Um, I'll, I'll like to make a motion to approve a BPDA Design Review.
And I would also add BTD review.
So ADR plus BTD, um, and, and can I make a request of, um, the BP, BPDA in their design review? Um, there's a lot of stuff that's gone on, a lot of construction that's gone on, um, on, um, in that section of the neighborhood. Can we look at the best designs and just up, up, up the game a little bit? Okay, on this?
Will do, Madam Chair.
Thank you, uh, so there's a propose, there's a motion, there's a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Calling the next case, calling BOA one-two-seven-seven, four-five-eight, fifteen forty-four Dorchester Avenue. This is a proposed change the occupancy from a professional office and two-family to a restaurant with takeout thirty-six, thirty-six A and a two-family. The violation is Article sixty-five, Section eight, restaurant use with takeout is conditional use in the zoning sub-district. Name and address for the record, please.
Is my phone on?
Yes. My phone, I, go ahead, I haven't muted you. Hi, Mike, can you hear us? Hi, Mike, we cannot hear you.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, good morning, Madam Chairs and Board Members, my name is Mai Fung at two-oh-four Adam Street, Dorchester, Mass. Zero-two, one-two-two for the record. Um, and the business owners are here with me, Vivian and Junior, please state your names and addresses for the record, please.
Mai, can you please go ahead and tell us, because this is for takeout use?
Yes, it is.
So tell us the name of the restaurant, and if, if the, um, owners have any, uh, previous experience, um, with, with the restaurant use and takeout.
Uh, yes, Vivian and Juniors are pre, uh, currently are the owners of the restaurant in Dorchester Ave. That the, uh, my sister's crawfish restaurant is about a block and a half away, and they want to expense the restaurant, but this is gonna be a sandwich and bakery shop, and it is about twelve hundred fifty square feet. And we propose for the, um, dining room with twenty to twenty-two persons with the handicap accessible bathroom. Um, and the, um...
Does it have a name, then, does the restaurant have a name?
Uh, yes, it's gonna carry the my sister crawfish restaurant as well, but it's gonna be served at a sandwich and bakery shop as well.
Okay, so it's my sister's coffee, okay?
Yes.
Uh, and...
And they have been around for a few years.
Okay, what's this, so let me just look at the BPDA's, uh, what is the zoning district this is in?
Um, this is a MLR slash LS, multi-family.
MFR, MFR LS, okay?
Yes.
Okay, so this is, um, an appropriate use. Uh, how are the plans, Miss, um, Miss, Miss Better?
Madam Chair, the plans are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Hi, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Kevin Tran from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We hosted an abutters meeting for the applicant on January tenth of two, of twenty-twenty-two. We received no concerns from the community, and the Fuse Corner Civic Association in Fuse Corner Main Street is in support for this project. At this time, our office would like to defer judgment to the board, thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary here, we have a few letters of support.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dustin Gardner, on behalf of City Councilor Worrell's office, we'd also like to go on record in support.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands at the moment.
Okay, given that information, may I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval.
Um, hold on, with the usual takeout provisos, until this petition only?
Correct.
Is, and there's a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA one-two-seven, nine-eight-zero-one, one-twenty, Braintree Street. This is to erect a five-story structure containing thirty-two dwelling units, one retail space, thirty-one parking spaces, which is a lift system, thirty-two bikes, roof deck. The violation is Article fifty-one, Section fifty-six, off-street parking is insufficient. Article fifty-one, Section fifty-six, off-street loading is insufficient. Article fifty-one, Section fifty-six, designed in appropriate means of maneuvering area. Article fifty-one, Section eight, a multi-family dwelling use is forbidden. Article fifty-one, Section eight, retail use is forbidden. Article fifty-one, Section nine, the additional lot area is insufficient. Article fifty-one, Section nine, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article fifty-one, Section nine, the building height is excessive in stories. Article fifty-one, Section nine, building height is excessive in feet. Article fifty-one, Section nine, usable open space is insufficient. Article fifty-one, Section nine, the front yacht is insufficient. Article fifty-one, Section nine, the side yachts insufficient. And Article fifty-one, Section nine, the rear yacht is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Madam Chair, just for the record, like, I'm gonna recuse myself for this matter.
Um, so to the applicant, this is a six-member board, and you need five members in support. You can take an administrative deferral to a later date, or you can proceed.
Um, I think you all can proceed, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Madam Chair, good, good morning, Attorney Derek Small, I'm a business adjuster of Warren Dobson Road. With me today is Lyndon Nishankin, he's the architect for the project. Madam Chair, we are here today seeking relief to rectify a five-story mixed-use building, thirty-two residential units, one retail space, and thirty-one parking spaces. The zoning sub-district here is a three-F four-thousand. Our lot size is nine thousand six hundred and thirteen square feet.
Sorry, nine thousand six hundred and...
Thirteen square feet.
Nine thousand six hundred and thirteen, and this is a three F four thousand?
That is correct. And the violation, I'll go through the violations and I'll turn it over to Linda so that she can go through the plans accordingly. So our first violation is building height, Madam Chair. The requirement here is three stories, thirty-five feet. We are proposing five stories, fifty-nine feet. Floor-to-air ratio requirement is zero point eight. We are proposing three point five. The MFR and the retail are forbidden in the zoning sub-district. With regard to the front yard, we are doing a modal setback or modal alignment. With regard to the side yard, the requirement is five feet. We do have five feet, and we think we were cited erroneously by ISD regarding that violation. Same with the rear yard, it's twenty feet. We have a twenty-foot rear yard setback. And again, we feel that we were cited erroneously before that. I'll turn it over to Linda, and she can go through the plans, and then we can open up any questions for the Board members to have.
Can you, can you talk, hold on, Mr., now, hold on, Counselor. Can you talk through the, you know, that I like to have the building, the unit sizes on record? And the IDP units on record?
Sure. I'll let Linda go through the building, the unit sizes.
Okay.
And then, for the record, there are five affordable under the IDP.
Mr. Shepkin?
If Linda's been unmuted.
Is she a panelist, Linda?
Linda Neshamkin.
You said Linda, I don't, do you see her on, Derek?
I don't, I don't have the full screen on.
Yeah, okay. I don't see on the panelist side or the attendee section unless she's on and do something else.
In any event, Madam Chair, you have two bedrooms ranging in size from eight hundred and twenty-three square feet to eight hundred and sixty-eight square feet. Fourteen one bedrooms.
Sorry, how many?
From six twelve to seven ninety-five.
And how many two bedrooms?
Seventeen.
I'm sorry, and then any threes?
Yes, one three.
One three?
Yes.
Okay. Are any roof decks proposed?
Yep, there is a roof deck proposed, Madam Chair.
And? For the use of the entire building, I assume?
That is correct.
Okay. One of the things I'm concerned about is, is that Penniman Street that you're backing up on?
Yes, I believe it is, yep.
Okay, there's...
And there's the parking layout there as well, start of parking.
Okay, what I'm concerned about is those residences have been there a long time. Some may be affordable housing. How is their privacy secured through this, to this building?
Madam Chair, we do have screening and buffering, which will be in place to help protect for the privacy of the residents on that side.
And what's the rear yard, the clear rear yard?
It's twenty feet.
Okay.
There's a rear yard setback.
Okay, and is that a penthouse on top of the building?
I think it's access for the roof deck.
Because it looks, it looks fairly large, so... But Ms. Better, how are the plans?
Madam Chair, the plans are adequate.
Can you talk about that, that, that whatever is up there on the roof?
Yeah, what, there's an elevator front off, front, in terms of the shaft, and then there's two stairs that I'm seeing. And then just an open deck. And a nice kind of patio deck to the left.
Okay.
Yes, there's a roof deck and garden space up there as well.
Correct.
Okay, and so is that rear yard abutting those homes, open space, or what is it?
I believe it is open space, yep.
So it's going to be green space with trees, et cetera?
Yep, landscaping, correct.
Yeah, because those homes have suffered a lot from the industrial uses, and now will be overshadowed by all this development going on around them. Okay, any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the Board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer to the Board's judgment. Some background information on the community process. They went through an extensive BP-led process. They met several times with both civic associations in the area, the Austin Civic Association, Brighton-Austin Improvement Association. Both civics liked the commitment to homeownership with deed restrictions to ensure that seventy percent of the units would be owner-occupied. Residents felt this would be a good opportunity for the area. Thank you.
Hello, this is Moore McCray from Councilor Brayden's office. The Councilor would like to go on record as part of this project. As Connor mentioned, we appreciate their commitment to seventy percent owner-occupancy, the deed restrictions. We also appreciate their inclusion of family-sized units and ID, family-sized IDP units. I'd also like to pass on that Representative Moran also supports the project. Thank you.
So there's only one three-bedroom, is that okay?
So... Look, oh, get, 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 Brenda, Brenda.
Hi, it's Linda Neshamkin.
Thank you. We are in the middle of getting testimony. Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition?
Anthony, you've been unmuted. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, hi. Actually, it's Linda.
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Tony Disidoro, representing the Austin Civic Association. Given, Madam Chair, the very low owner-occupancy rate in Austin and the need for more homeownership opportunities, this is a badly needed project, as was echoed by the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services and Councilor Brayden's office. There's a majority, number of family-friendly units, the IDP units. Again, majority, family-friendly units. Parking bike storage, very adequate density, and height is reasonable. And the fact that they've committed to a seventy percent owner-occupancy rate is obviously very attractive as well, so we would like to go on record in support.
Madam Chair, I was just wondering if we could clarify. I believe the unit mix that was previously written into the record is incorrect. I was wondering if the architect could clarify. I thought there basically...
I'm sorry, who is this? Is this Moore?
Sorry, I apologize. Yes, it's Moore McCray.
Then what issues the represented was there were two bedrooms, seventeen two-bedrooms, fourteen one-bedrooms, and one three-bedroom. And that's why I'm a little surprised at the, you know...
Madam Chair?
Yes?
Madam Chair, if I may, Linda Neshamkin is now on.
Okay.
Speak to that.
Okay, so...
She's the architect.
So Linda, please go ahead with the unit breakdown.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to go through and come up with a correction on this. The correct information is two three-bedrooms, which was negotiated through a long process. One on the accord, on the accord...
Linda, what is the average unit size of that three-bedroom?
Yes, eleven hundred and seventy-two square feet.
Okay.
And there are two of them on the project. The total count and breakdown on the project is thirty-two units, of which fifteen are one-bedrooms, fifteen are two-bedrooms, and two are three-bedrooms. Yes, thank you. So I think that's been important.
What are the sizes of the one-bedrooms?
Certainly, the sizes of the one-bedrooms range from six hundred and thirty-nine to seven hundred and sixty-three square feet. And the size of the...
Are the IDP units proportionally broken up around one, two, and three?
Yes, I believe that would be correct. I can tell you what the numbers are. Both of the, first of all, both of the three bedrooms are affordable units. And there is one two-bedroom affordable unit. And that's, size on that is eight hundred and seventy-four square feet. And there are two one-bedroom affordable units, and the size on those two is six hundred and forty-six for one of them and six hundred and sixty-three for the other.
And there's a retail space proposed. Can you tell us how large that is?
Certainly, the retail space is four hundred and thirty-seven square feet. It's intended to be at the corner of the building. We are a block and a half from the commuter rail Boston Landing Station, and we think that this would be a good community retail space.
Okay. And should that not work out, given the fact that there's all that retail on the other side? It's a little too small for an additional unit, but, okay. Okay, so we have the, any, Mr. Ambassador, any more raised hands?
Yes, yep, the caller was under Anthony Gilardi, the member?
That's Linda, right?
Yes.
Yes, Linda?
Yes, yes.
Oh, okay, right.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary here, we do have a few letters of support.
Good to see you after all these years, Mr. Gilardi.
I'm sorry, Minor, were you looking to give testimony? I see your hand is raised.
Yes, Jessica. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Minor Perez with the Carpenters Union would like to go on record in support of this project.
Thank you. And Annabella spoke, aren't you right?
No, she didn't.
No, Annabella did not speak yet.
Annabella, you can unmute yourself.
Madam Chair, Annabella Gomes from the Brighton-Austin Improvement Association. We'd like to go on record in support. We do support this project because it's one of the few that proposing on Braintree Street that is condos for homeownership and a commitment to seventy percent homeownership, which we would like to make sure that is written into the condo documents as well. And we do ask that care is taken to the sidewalk, that it is wide enough to be consistent with the design for the home type of street. Wide sidewalks on Braintree Street is important to activate the street. Thank you.
Thank you.
No additional raised hands, Madam Chair.
May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with BPD A and BTD design review paying special attention to the public way and the ground floor in addition to the material on the exterior. And, and that's it.
So it's hallway and ground floor and materials?
Exterior materials, correct. And, and, you know, after the review of the elevator, it was nice to see that it is a resource to the residents, that it's accessible, the roof deck. And this is why the BPD A should look at the exterior in terms of materials.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Have a good day.
You too.
Madam Chair, it's now eleven thirty-three. I'm going to call the recommendations that we heard at ten ten Mass Ave last Thursday. Case BOA one two eight three five zero one forty, Grampy and Way, was to construct a new rear addition. Existing two-family was approved. Case BOA one two eight five zero eight two three thirty-three, Naponton Avenue, was confirmed occupancy of one-family, construct a rear garage, attached garage. It was approved with BPD A and attention to the driveway, landscaping in a minimum of five feet and a rear yard setback. The violation, the next case was BOA one two eight one six seven seven eighteen Prescott Street. Was a change of occupancy from a single to a two-family and legalized two-family dwelling and extension of living space to the attic. It was approved. Case BOA one two seven two eight nine five twenty, Alameda Road, was to construct a three-foot by twelve-foot deck attached to an existing deck. It was approved. Case BOA one two seven six three two five forty-seven Chesboro Road was to take off roof and add a second floor to existing structure. It was approved with BPD A. Case BOA one two six eighty-eight nine nine seventeen forty-one Commonwealth Ave was heard today. It was deferred to the full Board. Case BOA one two two six one four four ninety-eight Bigelow Street was a rear house addition and a master suite. It was approved. And BOA one two seven seven two four nine three Adamson Street, constructing a second-floor addition, full bathroom and small bedroom, was approved. That concludes the hearing of the Subcommittee last Thursday at ten ten Mass Ave. Need a motion?
Motion to concur with the recommendation of the Subcommittee.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The meeting is now adjourned until twelve thirty. The meeting is now adjourned until twelve-thirty.
I want to send out the Cmail.
Recording in progress.
Um, just a reminder that we are using the Zoom platform today. And so I'm just going to very quickly go over the instructions. So just remember that members of the public will enter the virtual hearings as attendees, which means you will not see yourself on the screen and you will be muted unless administratively unmuted when asked to comment. So just a reminder, when you want to make a comment, please click the raise your hand button along the bottom of the screen. Click it again and your hand should go down. If you are connected to this meeting by telephone, please press star nine to raise and lower your hand and press star six to unmute yourself. I'm going to take a quick roll call to make sure everybody's not on extended lunch break. Ms. Fortune?
I'm here, Madam Chair.
Mr. Ehrlich?
Here.
Ms. Dong?
Present.
Mr. Regiro?
Here.
Mr. Ligris?
Here, Madam Chair.
Ms. Better?
Got a chair here.
Excellent. I know Jeff Hampton had to hop off. Mr. D'Amico?
Present.
Okay, good to see you again. Okay, Ms. Fortune, let's go for it.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to call the 1230 for rediscussions. Are there any deferrals or withdrawals for the 1230 cases? If you can give me the address, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney John Pulginie, 10 Forbes Road.
Give me the address, please, sir.
Oh, sorry, 60 Stanley Street in Dorchester.
Thank you. For the record, calling DOA 116-6627, 60 Stanley Street. Name an address for the record, please.
Attorney John Pulginie, 10 Forbes Road in Braintree. So this is, the reason for this request, Madam Chair, is the plans, we had revised plans and we had submitted them to ISD. The site plan was delayed, so that was submitted last Tuesday. So they have that, but it just didn't, it has to be 10 days in advance of the hearing in order to be, you know, able to have them re-review the revisions. So that's the purpose of it.
May I have a motion, please?
Want to defer?
Yes, please. Is there a second?
Second.
All those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The date, please.
You'll have a date of April 5th at 11:30.
Thank you, everyone.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for the 1230 rediscussions?
Hi, this is Drew Ledbetter.
Okay, please put your name, so please sign.
The addresses, please, that you're either deferring or withdrawing?
We're withdrawing 1187 Blue Hill Ave.
Okay.
For the cannabis establishment.
Thank you.
The reason for, no worries.
Hold on a second. For the record, calling DOA 125-9499, 1187 to 1195 Blue Hill Avenue. Name an address for the record, please.
Drew Ledbetter. And address is 31 Standard Street, Mattapan, Mass. 02126.
Okay, um, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to deny without my consent.
Motion for denial without my consent.
You have a second?
Second, Ligris.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for the 1230 rediscussions? Is Gaylord Street on?
That was deferred, Mr. Fortune, till eight.
March 8th, correct. I just have to call it for the record, it's in here.
Okay.
For the record, calling DOA 127-1408, 20 Gaylord Street. There is a companion case, DOA 127-1411, 22 Gaylord Street. Madam Chair, it is being deferred to March 8th, there has not been a set time, so it will be heard on March 8th.
Is there a second?
Second, Ligris.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
So there's only two cases to be heard. On the first case, calling DOA 124-9462, 324 to 328 West Broadway. This is on a vacant parcel, erecting new five-story mixed-use building, two commercial units and eight residential units with front and rear roof decks and elevator. The violation is Article 68, Section 29, roof structure restrictions, roof decks proposed, Article 68, Section 33, off-street parking and loading. Article 68, Section 34.1, conforming with an existing building alignment. Article 68, Section 8, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 68, Section 8, the building height is excessive in feet. Article 68, Section 8, the usable open space is insufficient. Article 68, Section 8, rig adds insufficient. Article 68, Section 8, lot area is insufficient. And Article 68, Section 8, the additional lot area is insufficient. Name an address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Moranci, I'm an attorney with the business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston. I represent Paul Adamson and Mark Cummins, the owners of the property, which is currently a parking lot used by Shenanigans Restaurant, which is located next door and is also owned by my clients. My client is seeking to replace the current lot with a new mixed-use building, as this is one of the last undeveloped lots on West Broadway, South Boston's main commercial thoroughfare. The lot is 4,368 square feet and is located within an MFR LS zoning sub-district under Article 68. Madam Chair, I'd like to turn this over to Tim Johnson, the project architect, to take the board through the building details. Tim?
Thank you, George. Madam Chair, members of the board, Tim Johnson, project architect. The proposed five-story, 10-unit mixed-use building will consist of two commercial units at ground floor and eight residential units in the floors above. All residential units will be three-bedroom units, 1457 square feet to 1484 square feet. And my client has agreed to remove the roof decks during the community process. The fifth floor is recessed six foot, six feet on the West Broadway side to allow for front balconies. All other residential units will have six-by-19-foot rear balconies providing usable open space. Lastly, working closely with the BPDA, the majority of the ground floor was given over to two commercial units at 1,000 square feet in lieu of parking. However, this project would qualify as a transit-oriented development, it is less than a half-mile to the Broadway Transit Station. I will take any questions, Madam Chair.
Okay, so then the, so what is the height of the building?
The height of the building, Madam Chair, is 52 feet.
And how does that compare with the Abboten buildings?
If we can go to that perspective there, you can see. Yes. So.
A story above the Abboten on the right-hand side.
It is a story above the four-story building on the right, yes, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, this is George Moranci. I've got quite a bit of experience with projects on West Broadway. By my count, I think this is the 17th building where I've represented the owner developer. On this block alone, which is between D and E Streets, of 17 existing buildings, eight are 50 feet plus and nine are under 50 feet, and even at least half of those are four-story buildings. So this is a building that's very consistent in height with the surrounding neighborhood, both in terms of recently approved buildings and even older buildings, some as old as 100 years, which are, you know, 50, 60, and even higher, you know, within one block of this site.
So it's not necessarily designed by appeal, though?
I'm not, sorry, I'm not quite sure what, what.
Okay. How are the plans, Ms. Better?
Madam Chair, the plans are accurate.
I just want to send out this email.
Recording in progress.
Um, just a reminder that we are using the Zoom platform today. And so I'm just going to very quickly go over the instructions. So just remember that members of the public will enter the virtual hearings as attendees, which means you will not see yourself on the screen and you will be muted unless administratively unmuted when asked to comment. So just a reminder, when you want to make a comment, please click the raise your hand button along the bottom of the screen. Click it again and your hand should go down. If you are connected to this meeting by telephone, please press star nine to raise and lower your hand and press star six to unmute yourself. Going to take a quick roll call to make sure everybody's not on extended lunch break. Ms. Fortune?
I'm here, Madam Chair.
Mr. Ehrlich?
Here.
Ms. Dong?
Present.
Mr. Regiro?
Here.
Mr. Ligris?
Here, Madam Chair.
Ms. Better?
Headed chair here.
Excellent. I know Jeff Hampton had to hop off. Mr. D'Amico?
Present.
Okay, good to see you again. Okay, Mr. Fortune, let's go for it.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to call at 12:30 for rediscussions. Are there any deferrals and withdrawals for the 12:30 cases? If you can give me the address, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney John Pulgeni, 10 Forbes.
Give me the address, please, sir.
Oh, sorry, 60 Stanley Street in Dorset.
Thank you. For the record, calling DOA 116-6627, 60 Stanley Street. Name an address for the record, please.
Attorney John Pulgeni, 10 Forbes Road in Braintree. So this is, the reason for this request, Madam Chair, is the plans, we had revised plans and we had submitted them to ISD. The site plan was delayed, so that was submitted last Tuesday. So they have that, but it just didn't, it has to be 10 days in advance of the hearing in order to be, you know, able to have them re-review the revisions. So that's the purpose of it.
May I have a motion, please?
Want to defer?
Yes, please. Is there a second?
Second.
All those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, the date, please.
You'll have a date of April 5th at 11:30.
Thank you, everyone.
Are there any other deferrals and withdrawals for the 12:30 rediscussions?
Hi, this is Drew Ledbetter.
Okay, please put your name, so please tell us.
The addresses, please, that you're either deferring or withdrawing?
We're withdrawing 1187 Blue Hill Ave. For the cannabis establishment.
Thank you.
The reason for.
Hold on a second. For the record, calling DOA 125-9499, 1187 to 1195 Blue Hill Avenue. Name an address for the record, please.
Drew Ledbetter. And address is 31 Standard Street, Mattapan, Mass. 02126.
Okay, um, may I have a motion, please?
Motion denied without.
Looking for denial without my good. Second, Ligris.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Are there any other deferrals and withdrawals for the 12:30 rediscussions? Is Gaylord Street on?
That was deferred, Mr. Fortune, till eight.
March 8, correct. I just have to call it up for the record, it's in here.
Okay.
For the record, calling DOA 127-1408, 20 Gaylord Street. There are companion, there is a companion case, DOA 127-1411, 22 Gaylord Street. Madam Chair, it is being deferred to March 8. There has not been a set time, so it will be heard on March 8.
Is there a second?
Second, Ligris.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Well, there's only two cases to be heard. On the first case, calling DOA 124-9462, 324 to 328 West Broadway. This is on a vacant parcel, erecting new five-story mixed-use building, two commercial units and eight residential units with front and rear roof decks and elevator. Valuation is Article 68, Section 29. Roof structure restrictions, roof decks proposed. Article 68, Section 33, off-street parking and loading. Article 68, Section 34.1, conforming with existing building alignment. Article 68, Section 8, the foyer ratio is excessive. Article 68, Section 8, the building has excessive infee. Article 68, Section 8, usable open space is insufficient. Article 68, Section 8, reg adds insufficient. Article 68, Section 8, lot area is insufficient. And Article 68, Section 8, the additional lot area is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Moranci. I'm an attorney with the business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston. I represent Paul Adamson and Mark Cummins, the owners of the property, which is currently a parking lot used by Shenanigans Restaurant, which is located next door and is also owned by my clients. My client is seeking to replace the current lot with a new mixed-use building, as this is one of the last undeveloped lots on West Broadway, South Boston's main commercial thoroughfare. The lot is 4,368 square feet and is located within an MFRLS zoning sub-district under Article 68. Madam Chair, I'd like to turn this over to Tim Johnson, the project architect, to take the board through the building details. Tim?
Thank you, George. Madam Chair, members of the board, Tim Johnson, project architect. The five, the proposed five-story, 10-unit mixed-use building will consist of two commercial units at ground floor and eight residential units in the floors above. All residential units will be three-bedroom units, 1457 square feet to 1484 square feet. And my client has agreed to remove the roof decks during the community process. The fifth floor is recessed six foot, six feet on the West Broadway side to allow for front balconies. All other residential units will have six-by-19-foot rear balconies, providing usable open space. Lastly, working closely with the BPDA, the majority of the ground floor was given over to two commercial units at 1,000 square feet in lieu of parking. However, this project would qualify as a transit-oriented development. It is less than a half mile to the Broadway Transit Station. I will take any questions, Madam Chair.
Okay, so then the, so what is the height of the building?
The height of the building, Madam Chair, is 52 feet.
And how does that compare with the Abada buildings?
If we can go to that perspective there, you can see. Yes. So.
It's a story above the Abada on the right-hand side.
It is a story above the four-story building on the right. Yes, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, this is George Moranci. I've got quite a bit of experience with projects on West Broadway. By my count, I think this is the 17th building where I've represented the owner developer. On this block alone, which is between D and E Streets, of 17 existing buildings, eight are 50 feet plus and nine are under 50 feet, and even at least half of those are four-story buildings. So this is a building that's very consistent in height with the surrounding neighborhood, both in terms of recently approved buildings and even older buildings, some as old as 100 years, which are, you know, 50, 60, and even higher, you know, within one block of this site.
So it's not necessarily designed by appeal, though?
I'm not, no, sorry, I'm not quite sure what, what.
Um, how are the plans, Ms. Better?
Madam Chair, the plans are accurate.
I like that, the plans are accurate.
That means they're drawn pretty well.
Okay. Is, any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Hi, Madam Chair, members of the board, Haley Dillon, Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services. I would like to defer to the board and just mention that the applicant has worked closely with the community. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Anna Calderon from Councillor Fling's office. The council would like to go in record in support based on a good community process and good faith compromises with neighbors on quality of life issues, including removal of the roof deck. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, members of.
Go ahead.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Solid, Assistant Counsel, Lodge, Michael Flaherty. While the counsel has consistently not supported zoning relief under Article 68, he recognizes the new conditions existing along West Broadway, and this project is consistent with past and ongoing redevelopment occurring on West Broadway. In response to the Abada's concerns about roof decks, the proponent removed the roof decks. For this project to improve, the counsel encourages the proponent to work closely with the Abadas and community at large to address any concerns. Thank you.
And I do have a raised hand from a number 857222. Can you hear us?
Hi. Yeah, hi. My name is. I'm, I'm sorry, say it again.
Yep, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Hi, my name is Michael Leo Chacos. I'm the owner of 348 West Broadway. And I'm in support, I'm in strong support of this proposal, to replace that empty lot over there, you know, fix the units, freshen up the street a little bit more.
Thank you. And I have no additional raised hands.
Mr. Moranci, there was no understanding that Shenanigans would use this lot for its parking, accessory parking or ancillary parking? Were there any understandings to that effect over the years?
No, Madam Chair. And this, the current restaurant Shenanigans has been there well over 20 years. I think before that, there were numerous other iterations, none of which, you know, went into place by representations that this would be maintained as, as a parking lot. So short answer is no.
Okay. Given that information, may I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with the PDA design review on exterior.
Is there a second?
Second.
I, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Good luck.
On the last case of the day, calling DOA 126-8899, 1741 Commonwealth Avenue. This is to convert existing dental office back to residential use. The building will have two-unit dwelling. This is for unit one and extend living space into the basement, creating three bedrooms. Violation is Article 51, Section 9, the foyer ratio was excessive. Name and address for the record, please. There, Mr. Roachon.
Okay. No?
I think Frank Williams, I believe, from the attendees, is the applicant?
Oh, my goodness. Frank Williams, okay.
Yes.
All right, Frank, go ahead. Can you hear us? Just made a, sent a request to unmute you. Hi, Frank, can, can you, we cannot hear you. Are you talking?
Can you hear me now? I'm sorry.
Can you hear you now? Yep, go ahead.
Yes. It's Frank Williams, 888 Tremont Street, Boston, Massachusetts.
So, Mr. Williams, please tell us what you're proposing to do. This project was at the subcommittee, but it did not qualify as a project for review, so we kicked it back to the full board today.
Yes, Madam Chair, that's correct.
Yes, so please explain to the full board what you're proposing to do.
Okay, I propose, well, my application seeks to increase the excessive floor ratio that's currently, area ratio that's currently there now. It's currently .8 and I'm actually looking at .94. This would take the first-floor apartment into the basement and create, it's, it's currently a walkout basement now, and it's actually just going to be using the, the interior of the, of the basement that's currently there now.
Okay, and how large will that first slash basement unit be?
It's the, well, it's, it's a combination of, of, of the, the first floor as well as the basement, and it's going to, it's going to roughly be about, it's going to be about 1,400 square feet.
Okay, and the second unit will be what?
The second unit's a little short of 800, and that's on the, that's on the second floor.
It's 800 square feet. Ms. Better, how are the plans? Because, you know, is it a basement or is it not?
It, it is a basement. It is, there is access, full access at the rear, but it is, as you can see in this elevation, it's pretty submerged at the front. So I would have liked to see a side elevation, but it doesn't have one right now.
Okay. And tell us about the bedrooms, and are they in the rear, Mr. Williams?
Yes, Madam Chair, they're in the rear. This is actually a row house, so it's, it's, it's a group of 50 row houses in this, in this block. And so on the, on the, this building basically is abutted by two other row houses. So there, so there's only a front and there's a rear. The rear, the rear has, has, you know, the, the rear has access by a door and also two windows. The, the bedrooms in the basement will actually have window access out directly in the rear of the building that leads you to, it basically leads you to the, to the backyard and into a, a city of Boston public alley.
Madam Chair, and I do see that there's two means of egress.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Mark, we cannot hear you.
Sorry, yeah. I, can we see a floor plan of the basement? Because I thought he said there were three bedrooms. I don't know how all of them would have windows. There's only two sets of, uh.
Bedroom is a combined unit from the basement and first floor, but he only has two bedroom units on the basement level to the rear.
And each of them has a window and a walkout.
Correct. Yeah.
Okay, that looks, that looks fine, then.
What's the ceiling height?
It's 85 finished.
Okay.
So is this, what is, what are, what are we looking at here? Is this the entrance way, the first floor?
So what we're looking at now is actually the basement.
Okay.
You, you would go out, you would actually leave out where the vestibule is. That's the, that's the second means of egress out into the backyard.
Oh, I see. So you'd have your living room in the basement, but you'd have your kitchen and the third bedroom on the first floor.
Yes, ma'am.
Interesting, okay. Any other questions from the board? Is anybody, oh, and the utilities, how are the utilities separated?
The utilities are separated by each individual unit. Where the vestibule is, that's where the, the hot water tanks are going. The furnaces are, they have their mechanical room within the apartment.
Okay. Is anybody here to speak, either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer judgment to the board. Some background information on the community process, notice was circulated to Abadas within 300 feet. The Mayor's Office did not hear any concerns regarding this proposal. They also went on to the Brighton-Austin Improvement Association and received their support as well. Thank you.
Madam Chair, secretary here, we do have a few letters of support.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Annabella, are you looking to give testimony here? Can I? Yes. Go ahead.
Okay. Madam Chair, members of the board, Annabelle Gomes from the Brighton-Austin Improvement Association. We'd like to go in record in support. It is consistent with the other row houses. The back basement is actually above ground. Most of them are 60% above ground in the basement, just not the front of the building. I do want to make sure that there is a second means of egress to the second-floor unit, Bill. Thank you.
Yep, and I have no additional raised hands.
Okay, given that information, may I have a motion, please?
Headed chair.
Go ahead.
You can go ahead, Mark.
Motion to approve.
Peranza, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Well, well, well. Meeting is adjourned. See everybody in March.